Okay, good morning and welcome to Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Meeting, Tuesday, May 28th. I am your Chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulte and Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting are available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. This just brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held in May 21st, 2024?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item two, claims. Approval of the claims processed through May 28th, 2024?
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item three, our special presentations, starting with 3A, recognition of Randy Farmer, Administrator, Pathfinder Education Program at the Youth Services Center for his years of service to Lancaster County.
Come on down. Mr. Clerk, is there anything to be read?
That's what I have.
Okay, fair enough.
If I may?
Yeah, please.
Brad Alexander, Director of the Lancaster County Youth Services Center. I just wanted to take a minute and express my personal appreciation and respect that I have for Randy. I've known him for several years and we've worked kind of at a distance together, but I always, I always knew that the kids here in Lancaster County were, were in really good hands with Randy and I feel fortunate that I got the last six months to see it up close and personal and it's just in our business, you just know it when you're working with somebody that has a true heart for, for these young people and Randy, thank you so much. On behalf of Lancaster County Youth Services Center and all of the kids that you've helped over the years, we really appreciate it.
I'd just like to thank the Board for the recognition. Any recognition that I get is purely in, in being, being provided by the fact that the amazing people from the Detention Center and from LPS that have supported me throughout my career. It is a team, it is a family of people that do the work there. It's not any one person that gets done the work that's done there. It is very challenging place to work. These are young people that need incredible support, but they are amazing young people. They've been through incredible life challenges, but I, I always argue these are some of the best and brightest young people in our community. Look at how many people that are successful, that go on to be incredibly famous, that, that are entrepreneurs, that, that do incredible things with their life, that turn around and say, "When I was young, I got in trouble, I made mistakes, I did some bad things, I was in trouble with the law." We don't know what these young people can turn out to be. When I started my career, we thought, oh, the right person, the right personality can help these young people. We know now adolescent brain development, trauma, positive behavior management, restorative practices, we know all of the things that lead these people back to, these young people back to the right path. We know how to get those things done. The people at the Detention Center, the people in LPS are doing that kind of work now and it's a team of people that do it. So I'm just proud to have been there through this process. I'm proud to have been able to do the work with these people and I, and I cannot have thought of a better way to have spent a career doing what I've done. I will continue to do this work with a nonprofit. I'm not going away from this work and I appreciate the recognition that I'm being provided, but I actually, it, it, it's all of us who've done this work together with your support and with the support of LPS and with the support of everyone who's there. So thank you very much. Couldn't have possibly said it better. Thank you. Randy, Randy.
One more thing.
One more thing.
We really do want to recognize you and this actually says with gratitude for your time and service with Lancaster County, but the reality is, thank you, I mean, you talked about the team, but you've been a leader in that team and that does make a big difference. And look at all the lives that you have touched and the influence that you've had on these youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I'm so glad to hear you're continuing in the work.
Thank you. One more. You've done yeoman's service for our community. Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to our next special presentation, 3B, the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for March 2024, to John Brady Sheriff's Office in the category of Valor, and I do have his nomination letter that I'll read.
Please.
John Brady, Deputy Sheriff with Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, has been selected as the Commissioners' Award of Excellence winner for March 2024. Deputy Brady has worked for the Sheriff's Office for 17 years. He was nominated by Sue Eckley in the category of Valor. In her nomination, Eckley states, "On February 4th, Deputy Brady rescued a dog that had fallen through the ice. Responding to the owner's call for help, Deputy Brady arrived at the pond to find the dog struggling in the freezing water. Without hesitation, he grabbed a kayak and went in after the dog named Bear, who'd been in the water for about half an hour. Thanks to Deputy Brady's bravery, Bear was saved from a dire situation. This heroic act not only saved Bear's life, but also garnered significant media attention, showcasing the dedication of our law enforcement officers. Lancaster County is fortunate to have deputies who work tirelessly to ensure public safety. Deputy Brady's actions went above and beyond his duties, reflecting the exceptional commitment of the Sheriff's Office. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Deputy Brady the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of March 2024."
Thank you.
Deputy, it's an honor to have you here this morning.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
I just, I've said it before, I mean, everybody to some degree comes to work not fully knowing the challenges they'll face. The folks in your occupation, it can run a wide range of gauntlet. I have no doubt that when you came to work this morning, you weren't expected, expecting to paddle out in a very intense situation.
Sure.
With someone's, something, Bear was very important to some, and yet you put yourself at risk to assist Bear. So, thank you so much on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you guys too, because although, you know, recognition isn't sought
at our office, it is appreciated. We do, we do appreciate that you guys are paying attention. There are so, there's so much good work being done by the men and women at the Sheriff's Office, that, you know, regardless of the situation, whether it was going through the ice or, or a traffic stop or anything else, there, there's a ton of good work going on out there. So I just want to really tell you guys, we appreciate you paying attention and really looking out after us. So, thank you guys very much, we appreciate it.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Next item up is item four, our consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice, unless there is an exception, and these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-23-0495 with the Mental Health Association of Nebraska, for the provision of well, personal well-being and relapse prevention classes for inmates in the custody of Lancaster County Department of Corrections, C-19-0236 with Celebrate Incorporated to provide universal forensic extraction device, C-20-0695 with Jones Automotive for the annual service and supply and installation of emergency equipment for city couns, county law enforcement vehicles, C-21-0331 with Lincoln Journal Star for the annual service of publishing legal notices, B, right away contracts with the following, Robert and Joanne Renner, West Panama Road and Southwest 86th Road in the amount of $748, Clayton and Stephanie Doschott, Princeton Road and South 134th Street in the total amount of $2,376, Michael McCullough, Olive Creek Road and South 120th Street in the amount of $2,035, Zach and Melissa Zaid, West Roca Berry Road and Southwest 27th Street in the amount of $217, C, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 at 9:00 AM in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding an appeal and resolution PC 01906, special permit 141 COA to amend special permit 141 CO for personal wireless facility by extending the allowed height of the tower from 199 feet to 210 feet, property located at 921 West Agnew Road, and setting a Tuesday, excuse me, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 at 9:00 AM in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding an amusement license for Stevenslake to hold an event on June 22nd at Old Farm.
I move approval of the consent items.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, new business, starting with 5A, resolution in the matter of extending the deadline for hearing protests regarding real property in Lancaster County from July 5th, 2024 to August 10th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5B, adoption of the 2020, excuse me, adoption of the 2024 Lancaster County Board of Equalization Policies and Procedures for Property Evaluation Protest.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5C, agreement with Robert Stanley to provide referee services to hear valuation protests for the 2024, 2025, and 2026 tax years, and to transmit to the Lancaster County Board of Equalization all papers relating to such protests, together with written findings and recommendations.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5D, request for exceptional circumstance award under Personnel Rule 17.9B for Michaela Hay, accountant in the county clerk's office, for a one-step pay increase. Commissioners, Matt Hanson, Lancaster County Clerk, and I am joined by Erica Pacina, our Accounting Operations Manager, and Michaela Hay, our accountant, who is eligible for this increase. You have our written, what we submitted to HR and for the Board, but essentially through kind of some absences and some transitions, Michaela was asked to do more during her probationary period than we would ask a normal employee in terms of learning extra job duties, covering for another employee's job description, and because of that, we felt she advanced faster than you could reasonably expect somebody, and because of that, I thought it was appropriate to recognize her with the exceptional circumstance award. With that, Erica, if you'd like to say next?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say a few words about Michaela. I truly believe she's a leader in our department and for the county. I'm excited to see how she's going to grow in the next years, and I know she's going to do great things for Lancaster County.
I very much enjoy working for the county. Never thought I would be here for eight years now, and I plan on being here for a while, so thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
I think it's always important when staff recognize the abilities of their coworkers, and it's really quite an honor to be recognized for your, for your effort, but, but thank you for all the additional work that you did take on.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. With that, that brings us to 5E, a special event permit application from Susan Cronin, Grounded Nebraska LLC, for Grounded Nebraska gravel cycling rides on June 29th, 2024.
Hello, I'm Susan Cronin. I'm here just in case there's any questions for this item, and then the next item is mine as well.
Anyone have any questions?
Can you just tell us briefly what the event is?
Sure, it is held at Roca Berry Farm. It is kind of a gravel cycling weekend. You're allowed to camp on site, and then we have three distances that you can ride on Saturday, and you leave and then return to Roca Berry Farm. We access the parking lot at the Norris School to do an aid station, and it's just, we kind of call it adult summer camp around bikes. So, we try to like show a short film, just kind of make it a full weekend of activities.
Very cool.
Very, very exciting, and appreciate you doing this.
No problem. We do our Friday night welcome at the Roca Tavern, so it's just a, it's a great, it's a great sort of small community experience.
I'll have some friends there. I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5F, the amusement license application from Susan Cronin to hold a Grounded Nebraska Gravel Festival on June 28th through June 30th at 16531 South 38th Street, Roca.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5G is a special designated license application from Farmside Weddings and Events LLC for an event at Roca Berry Farms on June 29th, 2024.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5F, the amusement license application from Susan Cronin to hold a Grounded Nebraska Gravel Festival on June 28th through June 30th at 16531 South 38th Street, Roca.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5F, the amusement license application from Susan Cronin to hold a Grounded Nebraska Gravel Festival on June 28th through June 30th at 16531 South 38th Street, Roca.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5G is a special designated license application from Farmside Weddings and Events LLC for an event at Roca Berry Farms on June 29th, 2024.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5H, reappointments to the Aging Partners Area-Wide Advisory Council for a term through July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027, for the following, Gloria Aaron and Tammy Burton Ficker.
I move approval.
Now, this is just another example of citizens of our community taking their own time for the benefit of the larger community, and we appreciate their efforts. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5F, the amusement license application from Susan Cronin to hold a Grounded Nebraska Gravel Festival on June 28th through June 30th at 16531 South 38th Street, Roca.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
5G is a special designated license application from Farmside Weddings and Events LLC for an event at Roca Berry Farms on June 29th, 2024.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5H, reappointments to the Aging Partners Area-Wide Advisory Council for a term through July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027, for the following, Gloria Aaron and Tammy Burton Ficker.
I move approval.
Now, this is just another example of citizens of our community taking their own time for the benefit of the larger community, and we appreciate their efforts. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5I, an agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for providing funding for the purchase of a transit vehicle to be used by aging partners for rural transportation in Lancaster County. The cost of the vehicle is $76,539, and the county will be reimbursed 100% of the purchase price.
Good morning, Mitch Summ, Lancaster County Public Rural Transit. Thank you for putting me on today's agenda. A little bit of history, because this started over four years ago in March of 2020. The Nebraska Department of Transportation received a grant of $27 million from the Federal Transit Authority to purchase or expand 5311 fleets, which is what we are in the state of Nebraska. We did a little bit of research, we found out we were not eligible in March of 2020. In March of 2021, we were told the guidelines had changed, there were still funds available. We were eligible at that time, so in April, we came before the Board to ask your permission to seek those funds, the intent being to buy a 3+1 ADA van. For those of you who don't speak transit, a 3+1 means it would be three riders not needing assistance through ADA guidelines, and one wheelchair or motorized scooter position. Our current fleet has two 10+2s and a 10-passenger van. This one's going to give us a chance to expand our services, and it's also going to give us a chance to not use the, the bigger vehicles when we have fewer riders. We did receive approval from you to seek those funds in April of 21, and in July, we were notified that we would get the vehicle when it became available, which brings us to our present time, the vehicles will soon be available. So I just need your approval to accept it. One, just quick correction, because I think I miscommunicated when we set this up, there will be no transfer of funds at all from the county. We will just pick up the vehicle, so there's, there's nothing like that. Any questions?
Yeah, this is good news. I would move approval.
Yeah, no, and just talk a little bit about, I will, I will second, but I would just ask Mitch that you talk a little bit about what you're doing with these vehicles. You're going to a lot of different communities.
Yes. Yeah, we operate through all of Lancaster County, plus the border communities of Adams, Suresco, Cortland, Eagle, and Greenwood. To use our program, people do have to have one, one of the boardings needs to be outside the city limits of Lincoln. We're primarily used by people from the smaller communities coming into Lincoln, but we are starting to gain a little traction with people going out to visit friends and family in the rural communities, which is nice, because we're not deadheading as much driving with an empty vehicle. This is not a program where if it wasn't for the federal funding we get every two years, we'd be able to do with the county. Boarding costs are $2 per person, so round trip from the smaller communities is $4. I'm not sure what kind of vehicles you folks drive, but I know I couldn't drive to any of them for $4 with my truck, so.
And this allows people to come into Lincoln for medical appointments?
Primarily, it's used for medical appointments and shopping, but we've had a push in the last five years where we've been reaching out to special needs citizens and they're using us to come in for jobs, so.
Thank you very much, and I do second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5J is an agreement with the Greater Lincoln Workforce Development Board for operation of a work experience internship program through temporary placement of American Job Center participants with Lancaster County agencies. There is no cost to the county.
This has been a really good program. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you go ahead.
I was, I have, actually have a list of some of our agencies that have applied, but it's going to take me a minute to find it, so I will, if you'll come back to me in a second.
Well.
Good morning, Andrew Barnas, Deputy County from the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Essentially, this is a contract that places people in internships within Lincoln. Another entity pays for the costs, so there's no cost to the county, and some of the entities that are covered under this are the Clerk of the District Court, Records, Engineer's Office, County Clerk's Office, Emergency Management, Property Management, and Human Services. And so those are some of those entities that these people will be placed under those internships.
Thank you, that was exactly the list I was looking for.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5K is authorizing the County Treasurer to cancel the county's subscription renewal Five K is authorizing the County Treasurer to cancel the county subscription renewal with No Wait Inside LLC effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Good morning. Rachel Garver, Lancaster County Treasurer. Um, we want to cancel the contract we have with No Wait because they, um, had an increase in their contract for the next year of three hundred percent. That got our attention. We had already, um, had a, a team that looked into the queuing system and if there was a better company out there that provided better services or for, and the amounts they, um, charged. And we, we didn't do anything about that list until we got this notice that the, of the increase. And then they went back and they took the one they, um, thought was the best, and I'll talk more about that because it's the next item, but we need to, um, cancel this subscription as of the end of June.
Was the original price just supposed to be like a promotional one?
Um, they, they were relatively new, and we were kind of like their, uh, beta tester. We were the biggest, um, entity that they worked with, and they were, it, we helped them out a lot, but they didn't, they helped us a little with the price, but then they just totally jacked it up.
And this is a, is this the end of the contract naturally, or there's no penalty for getting out of this?
Yes. We asked for it to go through the end of June for then, uh, a renewal, and we're not wanting to renew.
Yeah, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five L is a subscription agreement with Quatra LLC for virtual queuing and appointment platform software for use by the public retaining services at the County Treasurer. Cost of the county is not to exceed five thousand six hundred and eighty two dollars and eighty nine cents.
Qtrack was the company that, um, we thought would be a better company to go with, and we worked with them, and we, um, we quickly went and got references and checked them out to make sure that this was going to be something we wanted to go to. No company is ever going to be perfect because everybody, every, um, entity has its own needs and, um, but we think this will be even better than what we had with No Wait. Now, the difference here is the contract, when they wrote up the contract, they put a total on here, but then they had, um, the two items, a subtotal of monthly and a subtotal of one time. The subtotal of monthly was not times twelve months. It was only one month. So the total cost is going to be eleven thousand six hundred and twenty eight dollars and twelve cents for the, the year, and it's not that five thousand. So it needs to be approved for eleven thousand six hundred and twenty eight twelve, because if you read the contract, it says monthly subtotal, and that's only the monthly amount that got added into the contract. Still, this is going to be cheaper than going with, uh, No Wait by several thousand dollars.
Candice Behrens, Deputy County Attorney. Um, knowing the amount, I do need to look at the procurement, um, side of the con, of that. Um, you did get quotes from the other vendors?
Yeah, they, they, they did get quotes, yes.
Okay. Um, so I need, I just wanted to verify that a little bit before you, um, before you go ahead and approve the contract. So if it's possible for us to, um, put this at the end of the agenda today, for me to just review this really quickly?
Okay. Um, you, but we only have one more item.
Yeah, that's true.
There's public comment and announcements.
Yeah.
We can come back to new business after.
I just need to look, I just want to be certain that, uh, the amount stated in the contract wasn't the five thousand amount, so.
We'll come back to five L after, uh, after announcements, after number seven.
Okay, thank you.
Gives you five minutes, please.
Commissioners, that moves us to five M, um, an interlocal agreement with the following counties for housing juvenile offenders at the Youth Services Center at a rate of three hundred and thirty four dollars per day. They are Saline, Scotts Bluff, and Hall Counties.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Alexander, Lancaster County Youth Services Center. Um, we're just continuing to try to, the letters trickle in, and this is a few more examples of that, so we'll keep plugging away.
Do you know how many we're up to now, Brad?
It's over twenty.
Seems like it.
Yeah.
This has been pretty regular.
Right. Some weeks have been more than others, but yeah.
This, these interlocal agreements don't have any escalation in pricing for future years, right?
No.
Like, it's just, this is the price, and it has to be renegotiated again in the future.
Correct. Yes.
One interesting fact as well, I didn't realize that Scotts Bluff County has the space in it where the town, Scotts Bluff, is all one word. That was, that was new to me. I, I thought there was a misspelling, and I looked up, and I go, nope.
It's, it's correct, and it'll mess with you. Yeah?
Could tell which one you're talking about, though, the county or the city by that.
I'll move approval of M. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to item six, public comment. Those wishing to speak and items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak?
History repeats itself. Weak men create hard times. Hard times create strong men. Strong men create good times, and good times create weak men. And that brings us full circle to the hard times and to the separation we are all about to experience. And why? Because government has once again become self-serving and destructive of the ends it was instituted to serve. Let's review the process. When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands that have, which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitles them, a decent respect to, to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundations on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Again, government has become destructive of the ends it was instituted to serve. Government refuses to secure equality in the exercise of unalienable rights. This is a presidential election year. Government continues to refuse to properly obtain and secure our consent. Consent that is not transparent and cannot be verified is not legitimate consent. Without legitimate consent, there can be no legitimate and peaceful transfer, transfer of power. Without legitimate consent, there can be no legitimately delegated representation or authority of any kind, period. Election administrators have not been wise. They have not listened. They have built a house of cards and seeded their own destruction. A storm is brewing around this house of cards, and great will be the fall of it. Everyone is about to witness the dire consequences of not having the right people in power, and they're not going to be happy about it. The wrong people currently in power have invited millions of trigger-happy illegals into our country who are just waiting for the signal. The destructive riots of twenty twenty were a cakewalk compared with what you are about to see. It is going to get rough. But then? Freedom never came without a huge price tag. And that is what yesterday was all about, reminding us of the huge price tag. So be it. Every man dies, but not every man lives. And worse, not every man finds the narrow road to eternal life that comes through simply doing justly, loving mercy, and walking humbly with God. There is no peaceful transfer of power without legitimate consent, without transparent and verifiable consent.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Any other members wishing to speak? Okay. Mr. Clerk, please proceed.
Proceeding to announcements, Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, May thirtieth at eight thirty AM in room one twelve of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty four at nine AM with the Board of Equalization immediately following in room one twelve of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, four, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE dot gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast dot live at L N K TV. L N K TV is available on Allo Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln dot NE dot gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L N K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. And returning now to item five L, the subscription agreement with Qtrack LLC.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, so the contract documents state that the, um, the amount of the contract is five thousand nine hundred forty five dollars and some cents. This is a significant change in the, uh, price of the contract when we're talking about eleven thousand. I have to go through, um, an analysis to determine if our procurement rules were followed appropriately, and, um, I need to have further discussion with the vendor. So, uh, those changes are too many for you to make a decision today on this contract, so I would ask, um, that it, uh, be continued for next week, and we'll get it back on the agenda and have it resolved, okay?
We have coverage here till June thirtieth.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I think the goal, um, from the Treasurer was to have both of these items together to show, so that she could come here once and tell you that she's canceling a subscription and, um, ordering a new one, but it won't affect, uh, service at all.
Okay, we'll come back to this next week then, so we'll... Yeah, what's the, what's the right motion? What? Table it, what?
Yeah, we've tabled before to next week.
Yeah, but we then fight over what the right word is.
Morning Commissioners. I think a motion to postpone to the next meeting is, is appropriate here as well.
I move to postpone item, let me get the number right, item L.
Five L.
Five L until next Tuesday, which is June fourth.
There you go. I was pulling up my calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone until June fourth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, last item I have is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.